All right. It is 6:30. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America. And to the republic- For which it stands- One nation- Under God- Indivisible- With liberty-
With liberty and justice for all.
For all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray, thank you.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
I was muted. I'm present.
Thank you. Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of April 14th, 2020?
So moved. Dunaway.
Second. Days?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The April 14th, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening. We will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive and file same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three?
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number four, Fourth, First, Second, Third, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number six, Third, Sixth, and Seventh Districts.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number seven?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, Fourth and Fifth Districts.
Receive and file.
And that will be the order.
I think moving on to-
Please read the add-ons.
Yes. Madam Chair. Other Communications, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county matter be referred, the request be referred to the county councilor's office for preparation of the requested memorandum.
So ordered.
Item number two, Sixth District.
This is a substitute bill to Bill 104. I believe it represents a reasoned and reasonable compromise between where the parties are with respect to the $175 million. So with that, I'll receive, file, the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, Fifth, First, Second, and Fourth Districts.
This is a substitute bill that will make an expenditure, that will authorize money from the CARES Act received by the federal government to be used for PPE. I will receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Report of the County Executive.
Thank you, Lisa. For years as chairman of this council, I worked closely with other members of this council to root out wrongdoing of the former county executive. Also on the council at that time were Councilman Harder, Councilman Tracus, and Councilwoman Walton Gray, who joined me in this bipartisan effort. I became county executive on a promise of transparency and restoring trust to county government. I've now wavered on that promise. I will go to the county to receive later this week to help our response to COVID-19. My office must follow strict guidelines for how that grant can be spent, and a web portal will show in real time what the money is being used for. This is a public health crisis. We must take this seriously, and that means acting quickly. We should have the same bipartisan response to this pandemic that we did in bringing down a criminal enterprise. We shouldn't allow partisan politics to delay more tests. If we don't move with urgency, we will once again be repeating the history of leaving behind members of our most vulnerable population. We have seen here and across the country that COVID-19 is disproportionately affecting our African-American communities. We need to provide more outreach to make sure high-risk populations can get to testing centers. Testing on demand will allow us to pivot towards reopening our communities and getting people back to work. This morning, I was in James, where Affinia Healthcare opened a drive-through testing site at an Urban League Center. These partnerships help with access and are greatly appreciated. But we know we need more testing. And with this CARES Act grant, we can move quickly to provide more testing. This grant can be used only for COVID-19-related expenses, expenses that need guidelines provided by the federal government and overseen by the inspector general. I don't expect everyone to agree with me, but I will always work with everyone to accomplish common goals. Despite our differences on that CARES Act bill, the opinion of the council members will remain important to me. We should all be focused on this epidemic and do everything we can to save lives, and that includes using this federal grant to help our community recover from a health and economic crisis like anything we have ever seen before. Let's get our community more tests. Let's get this virus under control. And let's get our economy going again. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Page. There is no report of special committees. We will move on to public forum.
Madam Chair, we have 30 written public comments this evening.
Before you proceed, I would like to remind everyone of the rules that the council has agreed on for the virtual public forum. Only comments sent to councilcomments@stlewisco.com, which the meeting is being held at least an hour prior to the meeting, will be recorded into the public record. Email must contain the commenter's name and physical address. The comment must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of a three-minute statement, the same time allowed per person during our in-person council meeting. The administrative director or a designee will read the comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded into the journal. Bear in mind that when submitting these comments electronically, all commenters are expected to uphold the same decorum that we expect during a regular in-person council meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your cooperation and practice. Please proceed.
Madam Chair, the first citizen's comment is from Shannon McCullough, 9948 Lexington Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63124. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council, it is time to reopen St. Louis County parks, small businesses such as hair, nail salons, restaurants, and medical therapy practices, dental offices, subject to social distancing policy beginning May 3rd, 2020. With grocery and home improvement stores and pharmacies already open, we have learned how to shop utilizing the social distancing procedures. Opening more business coupled with mandated usage of masks is now possible. Our churches need to be reopened as well. It is a constitutional right for the people to worship freely, and this can also be achieved safely with social distancing. We must balance actions taken to flatten the curve of COVID-19 with the need to keep show-me state businesses viable. We can do both. We want to work. They don't want unemployment checks. Excuse me. People want to work. They don't want unemployment checks. There are businesses that people have put their blood, sweat, and tears into. If these businesses remain closed any longer, the businesses will be lost. They won't be able to recover. People are losing their jobs in the healthcare industry. Washington University is having to furlough 1,300 employees for at least 90 days without pay due to the canceling of all elective medical procedures and lack of routine preventative care related to health. We've got to get people back to work now. It is now time to take further action to ensure the livelihoods and mental health of Missourians. Sincerely, Shannon L. McCullough, DVM. Next comment is from John Schultes, 221 Whiting Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63005. Dear Dr. Page, I'm writing to ask that you open St. Louis County parks, retail outlets, restaurants, and other venues in order to get our great city back on its feet. As taxpayers and small business owners who call St. Louis County home, it is on us to protect ourselves and each other, not you, not government, but we, we the people. Social distancing, frankly a term I am guessing nearly none of us used two months ago, has become part of our everyday vocabulary, and we understand the need to practice it. Much like we understand the need to cough on our sleeve or stay home of feeling sick, we the citizens need to continue to just do the right thing, continue to make the right choices, and that is on us. Further, data presented appears that our peak has already occurred. Not only have we flattened, but have experienced downward trend even as testing has increased. We are making the right choices and will continue to do so. I know you have a hard job to do, and it is also impossible to make everyone happy. You need to allow us to govern ourselves when it comes to this. Thank you for listening. Next citizen comment is from Kim Baker at 401, I'm sorry, 409 Chukka Valley, Ellisville, Missouri, 63021. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council, it is time for both and thinking, we can both still continue to flatten the curve and take tangible steps to reopening St. Louis County. Please consider reopening St. Louis County parks, small businesses such as hair and nail salons, restaurants, medical therapy practices, subject to social distancing policies beginning May 3rd, 2020, and no later than May 10th, 2020. With grocery and home improvement stores already open, we have learned how to shop utilizing the social distancing procedures. Opening more businesses coupled with mandated usage of masks and continuing to limit the number of shoppers in stores is now possible. Look at the data, the both and of the data. While this virus is highly contagious, it is also lowly fatal. In fact, reporting this morning from serology testing finds that it is 50% more contagious and 50% less fatal. We must stop living by fear. Death will happen. That's inevitable. You and the council must state this as a fact. It isn't binary. Either people die of COVID-19 or they don't die at all. We must make, take actions to both flatten the curve and keep the show-me state businesses viable. We can do both. Thank you so much for your leadership thus far. It is now time to take further action to ensure the livelihoods and mental health of Missourians. Sincerely, Kim Baker. Janine Hoffer, 155 Royal Manor Court, St. Louis, Missouri, 63141. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council, please consider reopening St. Louis County parks, small businesses such as hair and nail salons, restaurants, medical therapy practices, subject to social distancing policies beginning May 3rd, 2020. With grocery and home improvement stores already open, we have learned how to shop utilizing the social distancing procedures. Opening more businesses coupled with mandated use of masks is now possible. Churches need to be reopened also. It is a constitutional right for people to worship freely, and this can also be achieved safely with social distancing. We must balance actions to flatten the curve. We need to keep show-me state businesses viable, and we can do both. Thank you so much for your leadership thus far. It is now time to take further action to ensure the livelihoods and mental health of Missourians. Sincerely, Janine Hoffer. Kate Stratten, 10253 Eddingham Terrace, St. Louis, Missouri, 63128. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council, please consider reopening St. Louis County parks, small businesses such as hair and nail salons, restaurants, medical therapy practices, subject to social distancing policies beginning May 3rd, 2020. With grocery and home improvement stores already open, we have learned how to shop utilizing the social distancing procedures. Opening more businesses coupled with mandated usage of masks is now possible. Churches need to be reopened also. It is a constitutional right for people to worship freely, and this can also be achieved safely with social distancing. We must balance actions taken to flatten the curve with the need to keep show-me state businesses viable. We can do both. Thank you so much for your leadership thus far. It is time to take further action to ensure the livelihoods and mental health of Missourians. Sincerely, Kate Stratten.
Next citizen comments is from Claire Hustle, 4248 Cottage Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri. I would like to better understand why Justice Services is using employees' PTO when dealing with COVID-19-related leave/issues. It states in the employees' compensation and benefits during SOE, all classes are to be paid at regular rate of pay with no impact to PTO time. Justice Services staff are considered essential, class 10. Being essential doesn't make an exception to being directly affected by COVID-19. Council comments from Celeste Whitzel, 3116 Southridge Park Lane, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. In an amazingly short amount of time, Lisa Clancy has blossomed into a female dictator. It was quite stunning watching Clancy express her bitter annoyance last week when Councilman Ernie Tracus merely requested a few seconds during the council meeting to speak up regarding a $7 million emergency spending bill to benefit North County that Clancy tried to steamroll through council. Lisa Clancy then proceeded to practically jump out of her chair to flat-out deny Councilman Mark Harder the opportunity to say anything when Harder requested to speak during last week's meeting. Wow. Clancy evidently feels that she's the only person with the right to speak. However, Clancy is not the only person with the right to speak in a democratic republic. This isn't Venezuela, Lisa. But with Clancy's eye-rolling, dramatic size, roughness, and her unfamiliarity in how to conduct a meeting, Clancy conveys over and over that being chair is over her head. So she resorts to tyrannical behavior to try and mask her inadequacies. Last week, when Councilman Tim Fitch asked for a committee of the whole meeting to discuss the $7 million emergency spending bill, Clancy immediately and combatively denied Fitch's request. And then, Clancy immediately and loudly shouted for adjournment. Her behavior was comical and ever-so predictable. Clancy is serving Sam Page and herself by using force instead of justice, and neither seeks wisdom. Now we learn that there's $170 million to be spent. Neither Page nor Clancy knows exactly where the $175 million will be spent, only that Sam wants it, needs it, has got to have it to shore up Page's North County votes for the Democrat primary election on August 4th against two other Democrats, Mark Manavani and Jake Zimmerman. Sam Page totally proved that either Mark Manavani or Jake Zimmerman would serve better as county executive. As a physician, Dr. Sam Page is sadly lacking in ethics. One wonders what medical school he attended. Did his school omit the ethics course? Every week, Sam Page and Lisa Clancy's actions make Steve Stanger, Stanger, look better. That's quite an achievement. Council comments from Donald Otto, Executive Director of the Missouri Funeral Directors and Embalmers Association. 1757 Wood Cliff Drive, Jefferson City, Missouri, 65109. Dear councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to, on the record, both support Bill 103 and to seek assistance in obtaining, as part of this effort, personal protection equipment for area funeral homes and their employees. Death care workers are classified as critical infrastructure workers by the Department of Homeland Security, and each day are picking up, transporting, embalming, preparing for disposition, burying, and cremating those who died infected with the COVID-19 virus. In addition, funeral home personnel must enter hospitals, nursing homes, hospices, and residences where it is known that there are living people who have been exposed to the virus. For these reasons, the Center for Disease Control Guidelines for Death Care Workers require for safe handling the use of PPE such as N95 masks, disposable gowns, nitrile gloves, and face shields. Unfortunately, the normal supply chain for these items is empty, and funeral homes are not being supplied with PPE from the emergency supply you may have read about, as those supplies are being directed primarily to hospitals, EMTs, and law enforcement. While those groups also are in need of protective equipment, the need for funeral home employees to be protected from exposure is no less great. And based on the CDC guidelines, if no supplies are found, eventually funeral homes may be forced to decline picking up and handling of deceased persons until PPE can be made available. Any assistance that the council can give in obtaining PPE supplies for area funeral homes will both protect the health of those who serve your citizens in the death care profession as well as allowing them to continue this critical service to the entire community. Our association would direct any PPE received to funeral homes as needed in accordance with any area or jurisdictional requirements that the council may deem proper. Thank you for your consideration and for all you have done to address this crisis. If you need any further information, please do not hesitate to contact our office.
Next citizen comment is from Neilia Avishan, 9129 Niger Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63123. Dear St. Louis County Council members, how many of St. Louis counties reported COVID-19-related deaths were confirmed with a positive test? How many of St. Louis counties reported COVID-19-related deaths were not confirmed with a test but reported as probable or presumed based upon the updated case definition that went into effect April 8th, 2020, or the previous criteria as outlined by the National Vital Statistics in March of 2020? Even though they are the official source for the state Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, DHSS responded to my inquiry with its detailed information stating that it is up to the local health authority to determine this distinction. Thank you for continual advocating for transparency in government, especially regarding how the county is spending millions of dollars related to the COVID-19 response. St. Louis County residents look forward to learning the specifics of how COVID-19-related deaths are being documented by St. Louis County. Sincerely, Neela Avishan. Next comment is from David Workman, 48 Beaver Drive, Creve Court, Missouri, 63141. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council, now that C19 cases are on the decline, fatality rates have decreased, and many reputable medical professionals have stated that the virus is less potent to most people than originally thought. Please consider reopening St. Louis County parks, small businesses, restaurants, and medical practices, subject to social distancing policies beginning May 3rd, 2020. Grocery, hardware, and big-box stores with hundreds of shoppers inside, the stores have all time been open since the beginning with very little effect on the healthcare numbers. There is no reason small businesses, which have suffered tremendous economic hardships during the lockdown, should not be opened as well. Customers have learned to be responsible to prevent the spread of the virus. Houses of worship should also reopen so that we do not continue to violate our First Amendment right to gather for worship. If we are truly concerned about the health and well-being of citizens in the St. Louis area, then we need to reopen the economy and let people get back to work and resume as normal a life as possible. Sincerely, David Workman. Paula Coughlin, 14 Granada Way, Ladue, Missouri, 63124. To Sam Page and the St. Louis County Council, this is a call to reopen St. Louis County. Role of the temporary shelter-in-place policy was never to eliminate the COVID-19 virus. The goal of the policy was to slow the virus down, to prevent our hospitals from being overwhelmed, and to allow the hospitals time to train and prepare for the treatment of the COVID-19 patients. We did just that. Our hospitals are ready, and they are not even close to being overwhelmed. As of Sunday evening, KSDK reported St. Louis County having 2,200 positive cases and 81 deaths attributed to COVID-19, and we are not at or very near peak. These numbers are sad, but completely manageable. Your entirely undefined policy of keeping St. Louis County parks, libraries, restaurants, businesses, and churches closed indefinitely does not further the public health any longer. Instead, it just erodes the public trust in you as healthy people stay home and watch our economy fail. St. Louis County can and should be reopened with a reasonable social distancing procedures in place. Please follow the lead of Governor Parson and the end of the shutdown of St. Louis County on May 3rd, 2020. Thank you. Mary Beth Rolls, 1264 Wilton Lane, Kirkwood, Missouri, 63122. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and St. Louis County Council, please consider reopening St. Louis County parks, small businesses such as hair and nail salons, restaurants, and medical therapy practices, subject to social distancing policies beginning May 3rd, 2020. With grocery and home improvement stores already open, we have learned how to shop utilizing the social distancing procedures. Opening more businesses coupled with mandated usage of masks is now possible. Churches need to be reopened also. It is a constitutional right for people to worship freely, and this can also be achieved safely with social distancing. We must balance actions taken to flatten the curve with the need to keep show-me businesses viable. We can do both. Thank you so much for your leadership thus far. It is now time to take further action to ensure the livelihoods and mental health of Missourians. Sincerely, Mary Beth Rolls. Next comment is from Rich Ellis, 7140 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. Dear councilmembers, I'm a neighbor of the subject address, which is 7190 Christopher Drive, and recently found out a company was allowed to purchase this property with the intent to run a group home business from it. Monte Nieto's business model clearly does not represent what the neighborhood was zoned for, and I am shocked that the sale was allowed to go through. As you are leaders in our community and represent me and our neighborhood, I ask for your initiative to address this zoning law or to change the zoning ordinance verbiage to match what a residential neighborhood is meant to be. I'm concerned for the safety of our residents and our neighborhood environment that a private equity-owned company will be running operations out of what was formerly a single residence. We are fortunate that our kids are older, but I am especially concerned for the families of young children in the immediate area with additional traffic and strangers rotating through. There is no way to justify classifying Monte Nieto's newly purchased property as a handicap, long-term group home. As I understand their class are short-term residents, patients housed while receiving short-term treatment. Please do the right thing and stop this company from operating a business from our neighborhood. Surely there are suitable alternatives that are zoned for businesses that will allow Monte Nieto to operate its business in the area. Respectfully submitted, Rich Ellis.
Council comments received from Julie Combs, 7931 Arlington Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. Also from Terry Deloge, 2 Fair Lake Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63305. And also from Tom Deloge, 2 Fair Lake Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and St. Louis County Council, please consider reopening St. Louis County parks, small businesses such as hair and nail salons, restaurants, and medical therapy practices, subject to social distancing policies beginning May 3rd, 2020. With grocery and home improvement stores already open, we have learned how to shop utilizing the social distancing procedures. Opening more businesses coupled with mandated usage of masks is now possible. Churches need to be reopened also. It is a constitutional right for people to worship freely, and this can also be achieved safely with social distancing. We must balance actions taken to flatten the curve with the need to keep show-me state businesses viable. We can do both. Thank you so much for your leadership thus far. It is now time to take further action to ensure the livelihoods and mental health of Missourians. Council comments from Kathy Ellis, 7140 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. Dear county council members, I live in the residential neighborhood where the home of 7190 Christopher Drive is and just found out was sold to a for-profit medical treatment facility. It is not right that this type of business should be allowed to operate in a residential family community. We bought our home for the quiet peacefulness and privacy of our neighborhood. We were never even asked if we'd mind the hundreds of extra people in traffic in the form of visitors, staff, deliveries, doctors, patients, clients, and temporary residents who will never know who they are because of the high turnover of patients. Monte Nito is not a group home. It is a medical treatment facility with temporary residents changing out every one to three months. It is unacceptable that this was considered and should be rescinded. Please support us by clarifying that a business should not be run out of a neighborhood. Council comments from Melanie Broyles, 17621 LaSiandra Drive, Wildwood, Missouri. Please consider communicating a plan to open our community. Small business is hurting and needs to hear exactly how this will roll out. I heard you mention yesterday that you believe our peak is coming this weekend. Our cases, however, tell another story. St. Louis County residents have done a good job of taking precautions, and it seems the only decisions have been to take more and more liberties away from residents. Our cases have continued to go down. April 10th, 143 cases. April 11th, 80 cases. April 12th, 43. April 13th, 69 cases. April 14th, 49. April 15th, 80 cases. April 16th, 87 cases. April 17th, 75 cases. April 18th, 74 cases. April 19th, 50 cases. April 20th, 61 cases. Many health officials believe our peak has passed. I implore you to avoid words like indefinite and show us your plan. The mental health damage being done to residents, families, and businesses has gone on long enough. We have elected council members to represent us in the decisions that are being made, and your disregard for their votes on major decisions, including major expenditures, is unsettling. That is not working for the people. Please show us you can lead medically and economically. True leadership is about bringing people together and not isolating entire districts as you consider choices to make. Council comments from Stacy Washington, 167 Lamp and Lantern Village, Chesterfield, Missouri. Please consider reopening St. Louis County parks, small businesses such as hair and nail salons, restaurants, medical therapy practices, and dental offices subject to social distancing policies beginning May 3rd, 2020. With grocery and home improvement stores already open, Missourians have learned how to shop utilizing the social distancing procedures. Opening more businesses coupled with mandated usage of masks is now possible. Churches need to be reopened also. It is a constitutional right for people to worship freely, and this can also be achieved safely with social distancing. According to the IHME model, Missouri reached the peak for coronavirus death eight days ago. Now that the worst has passed, we have to reopen to keep show me state business viable. Businesses viable, excuse me. Thank you so much for your leadership thus far. It is now time to take further action to ensure the livelihoods and mental health of Missourians. Council comments from Jeff Lowery, 7186 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. I am the neighbor immediately to the north of the above-mentioned property at 7190 Christopher Drive. I wrote to you last week regarding concerns over the fact that a residential treatment facility by the name of Monte Nito has purchased the property in order to put in a business that specialized in dealing with individuals dealing with eating disorders. I am writing to voice additional concerns over this facility. I have additional research and everything that I continue to find out about this treatment is that it is indeed a business. They build medical insurance, and if not covered by insurance, then arrangements are made for privately paying for services rendered. Last time I checked, anytime you will for something and get paid for something, whether it be through insurance or privately paid, that constitutes a business transaction taking place. The following is a quote from the homepage for a website I came across called Monte Nito Kills. Monte, quotes, Monte Nito targets nice, quiet neighborhoods and unincorporated areas without HOAs or neighborhood governing bodies in counties that have very lax laws regarding group homes. They move in, set up shop following the zoning codes, and then go back and get conditional use permits that allow them to increase the number of patients they are allowed to treat. They are a medical treatment facility, not a group home, end quote. This is exactly what is happening here. In my only conversation with Gail Shout at the county, she mentioned to me they are currently allowed to open and treat up to eight residents, but they are allowed to petition for more in the future, at which time a public hearing is required to take place. This home is 15,000 square feet, as I understand, give or take a little. It is obvious they are not planning customers on the inpatient side. I am reluctant to guess how many customers can be admitted on the inpatient side in a home of that size. I would have to guess a minimum of 20 to 30, not to mention the number of outpatients that will be coming and going. There is also the staff to treat these customers, which is not shy about advertising, advertising their low patient to staff ratio. We have already heard a parking lot extension that will have to be put in to accommodate that number of people. Driving down Christopher Drive, this business will stand out like a sore thumb. I beg of you, our elected officials, to help all of the neighbors in the area to put a stop to this facility as soon as possible.
Following, uh, comment from Michael, Michelle, Allison, and Nick Harrell at 17618 Lisandria Drive, Wildwood, Missouri, 63005. Members of the council, please consider reopening St. Louis County parks, businesses, and churches as soon as possible. Our friends and families need to get back to work, and we would like to support them. Let our county lead the way by getting back, by, excuse me, let our county lead the way in getting our lives back in order. Thank you. Next comment is from Beth and Kevin Rugg at 7201 Christopher Drive. We live directly across the street from 7190 Christopher Drive. We are writing to express our concern over the sale of 7190 and its intended use. We would also like to express our disappointment in how this was even allowed to happen. The property was sold to Monte Nito, a for-profit corporation that runs inpatient treatment centers across the country. We are not unsympathetic to the nature of treatment and those who need it. We are very supportive of anyone seeking help and care. But we do not feel that our residential community is the proper location for such a treatment facility. In addition to the large staff and service providers that would be coming in and out, there would be a turnover of eight to 12 clients every one to three months. The clients would also have visitors coming in and out. Plans have been submitted to expand the driveway. The lawn across the street is going to become a parking lot. As parents of two small children and neighbors to friends with four small children, we are terrified by the increase in daily traffic and the number of unknown people who will be in close such proximity to our home. Per the Monte Nito website, how long do people usually stay in different levels of care? Most clients stay somewhere between one and three months. When it is time for clients leave 24-hour care, the client and treatment team work together to establish an after-care program which is less structured and more flexible. Most of our locations, we offer both day-in treatment program and a transitional living residence where the length of stay is flexible. Clients would be receiving the following. High levels of medical and psychiatric care with 24-hour nursing in the comfort of a home setting. Cognitive process therapy to address co-occurring PTSD in all programs, providing the ability to seamlessly continue this therapy through all levels of care. Motivational enhancement approaches to support behavior change. 12-step meetings and sober living after-care options with co-occurring substance use disorders. Nutritional pro- nutritional programming that meets different nutritional needs. Skills development through evidence-based treatments such as dialectical behavior therapy, cognitive behavior therapy, high staff-to-client ratio, and comprehensive discharge, discharge planning. Based on the facts provided by Monte Nito, this is a short-term medical facility. They are listing all the medical services that would be provided onsite. They list 24-hour nursing care twice. Following comment is from Christina Lory at 7186 Christopher Drive in Oakville. As all of you know by now, the house at 7190 Christopher Road next door has been purchased for, by a for-profit corporation named Monte Nito. This property be, is being slated as group home for persons with eating disorders. Upon hearing the news, I thought, no way, this can't be true. We live in a resident, residential area and not in an area zone for businesses. I was able to confirm that the St. Louis County Planning Department has come to the conclusion that a business such as Monte Nito qualifies as a group home and can open in a residential area. As a residential owner in this area, I strongly disagree with their interpretation. I'm not going to spell out Cor- County Ordinance 1003.107, Number 2, Section 11, because of the 400-word constraints. I believe the council can look it up for themselves. I won't go into legal concerns with this ordinance and this proposed business, as I'll leave that for your lawyers. As a physical therapist, I am not unsympathetic to those with disabilities. I treat these individuals on a daily basis. I've worked in group homes in the past as well. This is a medical treatment facility that is solely for profit. I'm not opposed to a group home going in next door to me if it was truly a group home, a place where those individuals live there permanently due to a mental or physical handicap who are in need of 24/7 supervision in order to live a productive life in society. Not a medical treatment facility that has a turnover of eight possible up to 12 clients, most of them who are paying privately to the tune of over $33,000 a month. By the way, one every three months and hides behind the Fair Housing Act, American Disabilities Act, and the Affordable Care Act to run their very lucrative business. As a resident of Oakville, I am begging you, our elected officials, to help us all put a stop to this medical treatment facility ASAP. Sincerely, Christina Lory. Next comments are from Judy Clark, 7204 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63129. Shame on whoever passed the approval through for an inpatient treatment facility to be in our neighborhood. None of the workings were transparent to our community until the movers arrived. How can a monstrosity like this Monte Nito extravaganza have been rubber stamped by the people who are supposed to have our best interests in mind? This is creating a circus, healthcare workers, domestic workers, maintenance workers, patients who, patients with who knows what? Sorry, I don't know what that word is. Some kind of conditions to move into the cover of darkness. This is a residential neighborhood. What are you doing to our property values? I hope you are brave enough to read my letter this week. Evidently, you ran out of time last week. Someone needs to remedy their, this horrendous situation you have created. Next comment is from Claire Atkins, 12835 Topping Manor Drive, St. Louis, Missouri, 63131. Dear Dr. Page, Council Chair Clancy, and the St. Louis County Council, the for, the governor of Missouri has called for the state to reopen on May 4th. I respectfully ask that the St. Louis County Council confirm whether it is working on reopening plans to coincide with this date. This would reassure the public that you are working on multiple fronts. Federal government is encouraging local leaders to evaluate data on an individual zip code basis. There is much we can learn from Missouri's data. For example, mo.gov.health shows a speak, a peak of new cases on April 6th. According to the experts, daily health, excuse me, daily death spike occurs approximately 14 days later, around April 20th. Sadly, we are at this point. This is Missouri's publicly available data. While we can disagree on models, surely we can agree on what the basic data shows. The data shows which zip codes have a higher incidence of hospitalizations. The data shows by zip code where the highest per capita concentrations of cases is. The data shows 86% of deaths are over the age of 60 years. Retirees are perhaps the easiest group to quarantine and are by and large not working. The data shows 90% of those who contract the virus will recover without hospitalization. The data suggests that our hospitals are positioned to cope with new coronavirus cases. Respectfully, it is the county council's responsibility to start making plans now to reopen St. Louis County. We should work together to gradually reopen our area. There are cities within our community who are ready to reopen businesses. The data supports this. Our lockdown has brought us time to learn about this virus and what therapeutics work. We are blessed today to have had access to drugs unthought of during the pandemic of 1918. And the invent a second wave of the virus hits, we will be ready to cope. The data supports this. Let us evaluate what we, what we know and have the courage to make decisions based on the facts, not fear of the what-ifs. Otherwise, St. Louis leaders of the 2020 pandemic may be remembered for decimating Missouri's economy and healthcare system. We should all work together to ensure St. Louis and the state of Missouri return to full health. Sincere, Claire Atkins.
Council comments from Paul Berry III, 11932 Barbara, Maryland Heights, Missouri. My testimony seeks to address this honorable council's consideration to grant the appointed St. Louis County executive the ability to spend $175 million of COVID-19 economic relief by the CARES Act authorized by our US Congress and President Trump. It has come to my attention this honorable council seeks to grant our St. Louis County executive the authority to expend the aforementioned $175 million of COVID-19 economic relief without further authorization of this council. I find this position by proponents of such overarching and king-like authority sought granted to our St. Louis County executive as a direct attack on the power of the purse authority of our honorable council. There is no question that St. Louis County Executive Page requires a certain amount of budgetary flexibility to address the financial needs of our great county. However, what has been proposed is simply unnecessary and surrenders the checks and balances created by St. Louis County operating with council members elected by St. Louis County voters. The CARES Act provides direct funding to St. Louis County and the state of Missouri, which suggests that A, St. Louis County is eligible for direct economic relief from the federal government, and B, because St. Louis County will receive direct relief from the federal government, that the state of Missouri will not provide direct economic relief to St. Louis County municipalities. The COVID-19 crisis has ravaged St. Louis County municipal governments, and as a direct result, now threatens layoffs and terminations of municipal law enforcement officers. The city of Chesterfield, who maintains the largest municipal tax base in St. Louis County, recently had to enforce a 20% pay cut for all police officers to stop laying off 16 police officers. Municipal law enforcement funding in North St. Louis County is facing draconian cuts and layoffs. I humbly request this honorable council consider the following COVID-19 allocations. One, release $17.5 million to our St. Louis County executive, limited to purchasing PPE and other direct COVID-19 related expenses. I ask St. Louis County Council to stipulate what expenses our county executive may satisfy without further request to this honorable council. Number two, release $35 million to municipalities of St. Louis County earmarked solely for law enforcement payroll and operating expenses. Number three, utilize an expedited budget process as the state of Missouri has done to allocate the remaining 70% of $175 million COVID-19 recovery funds. Council comments from Michael Burton, 10258 Squire Metals Drive, Lakeshire, Missouri. Thank you for listening to all of us tonight. I'm writing in regards to a couple of things. First is the possible opening of St. Louis County parks. Please do not do this. The St. Louis region is fortunate it has had more time than others to prepare. Let's please not take that for granted. It's been less than three weeks. We can wait longer. Of course, considering residents' mental health, it's so important right now, but keeping them alive is more so. How are you going to prevent the parks from being overcrowded? How much security will be there to stop those not practicing social distancing? Please try running or biking on a trail while keeping a six-foot distance from others at all times. I've never been someone to always listen to the advice, better safe than sorry, but it's possible this is a moment we all should. Please keep the parks closed unless you have a strong plan to prevent residents that don't li- live together from breaking social distancing rules. The only exception could maybe be Lone Elk Park if people stayed in their cars. I hope you guys give this a special amount of attention. There are still nurses in St. Louis County without the proper PPE. I think many on the council are wanting to see their constituents get outside and be happy and be well, which is an admirable thing. It just seems too soon. I do hope you consider opening retail curbside pickup for businesses that can do it safely. Some businesses bring lots of joy to our community and could be operating with no contact. Please include businesses like that in your first phase of opening St. Louis. Please include businesses like that in your first phase of opening St. Louis County up. As far as allowing the county executive to use the $172 million in federal funds without votes by the council, why can't you allow the county executive have 72 million for emergency spending for things we need right now and have 100 million to be passed through the council? Just a thought. Please stay safe and healthy, and thank you for all the work you have been doing. Council comments from Allison Schodel, 57 Portland Drive, Frontenac, Missouri. Please reopen St. Louis County Parks, small businesses such as hair and nail salons, restaurants, and medical therapy practices subject to social distancing policies beginning May 3, 2020, in accordance with Governor Parsons' recommendation. With grocery and home improvement stores already open, we have learned how to shop utilizing the social distancing procedures. Churches need to be reopened also. It is a constitutional right for people to worship freely, and this can be done safely with social distancing. Thank you so much for your leadership thus far. It is now time to take further action to ensure the livelihoods and mental health of Missourians. Council comments from Tom Sullivan, 751 Syracuse, University City, Missouri. Madam Chair and members of the council, it's a shame that St. Louis County efforts to fight the coronavirus is so convoluted and disjointed. Anyone listening to today's committee meeting would realize that. County citizens deserve better. It's being said that Bills 103 and 104 should be hurriedly passed with little scrutiny because lives are at stake with the virus. If lives are at stake, that's a good reason to not hurriedly pass them to make sure the funds will be spent as needed. The same is true for vulnerable populations. It should be noted the county health department will be leading the coronavirus fight. It has been the most inept department in county government for some time, unable to even run an animal shelter. More and more, it seems the COVID-19 fight is part of the Sam Page election campaign. Cindy Brinkley was appointed by the county executive to head the group, that is to advise on how to spend the $175 million. At the same time, the council is to be mostly ignored. Ms. Brinkley and the company she worked for, the Centene Corporation, have contributed nearly $100,000 to elect the county executive. She is anything but independent. It is no surprise that county, excuse me, it is no surprise that Council Chair Clancy is all for the county executive wanting to spend $175 million with no oversight and minimal debate. She is a big supporter of his, and her brother is the Page campaign manager. This presents more than one conflict of interest. Dr. Alex Garza heads the Medical Task Force on COVID-19. He is a friend and campaign contributor to County Executive Page. He has praised the county executive's actions numerous times. The council should reject Bills, Bills Number 103 and 104. It would be irresponsible to approve them. Thank you for listening to my comments. And our final council comments this evening come from Matt and Lisa Burns, 7006 Christopher Drive, St. Louis, Missouri. It has been brought to our attention that the residence at 7190 Christopher Road will soon be used as a commercial medical treatment center for eating disorders. As a member of the community at 7006 Christopher Drive and also the owners of 714 Christopher Drive, I do not agree with allowing this. Christopher Drive is a residential area, and we do not want more traffic on our roads or people coming from all areas of the country to this treatment facility, not to mention the amount of staff, turnover of the patients and visitors. We already have enough speeding and accidents on this curvy two-lane highway as it is. We are also afraid of what this will allow for our future. How many other large houses that cannot be sold in the current market will be able to be turned into other kinds of treatment facilities like alcoholic or drug recovery programs? This is not the direction, this is not the direction we want to see our community take. We would like to continue to have a private and safe residential area, the kind we brought into, we bought into when moving into our house eight years ago. Thank you for your consideration, and we can be contacted at any time. Madam Chair, that is all the public comments.
That concludes the public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill Number 105, introduced by Councilmember Fitch. An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 12,595 as amended by repealing and reenacting Section Three pertaining to PC 181-85, John W. Kelly Trustee et al. Bill Number 106, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. An ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R-5 Residence District and the C-2 Shopping District as provided herein, PC 03-20 Hillven Investment Corporation. Bill Number 107, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Engineering Design Source, Inc., for engineering design services related to improvement of Creve Court Mill Road, AR-1563, authorizing the Director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to execute necessary documents for revision of work activity schedules, and repealing Ordinance Number 27,541. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
We will move on to perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill Number 20 is held.
Bill Number 5, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
I move to hold Bill Number 5.
Bill Number 5 is held.
Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Apologies, please hold Bill Number 32.
Bill Number 32 is held.
Bill Number 36, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to hold Bill Number 36.
Bill Number 36 is held.
Bill Number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold Bill Number 76.
Bill Number 76 is held.
Bill Number 99, introduced by Councilmembers Days and Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 99.
There are second.
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 99 is perfected.
Bill Number 100, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 100.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 100 is perfected.
Bill Number 101, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 101.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 101 is perfected.
Bill Number 102, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
To perfect Bill Number 102.
Second, Councilwoman Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
I appreciated Councilwoman Dunaway taking my call today to ask questions about this. I did tell her that I would most likely vote no on this for final approval tonight. It's for perfection. I do want to look into it a little bit further, so tonight I will vote aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
I too, I too have some questions over this bill. I will vote aye for perfection, but I need those questions answered before next week. So I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilman Harder. Madam Chair, on the motion to perfect Bill Number 102, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill Number 102 is perfected. I would also like to remind council members that when we are voting, we are voting. If you would like to make a statement, please ask to be recognized prior to the votes being taken. Thank you. Moving on.
Bill Number 103, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 103, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder. An ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $7,400,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Fund and transferring the sum of $1,500,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Emergency Fund for supportive costs associated with the county's efforts to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic in St. Louis County.
Madam Chair, is this when I ask for permission to speak?
You may ask, yes, it would be your turn to say whether or not you would like to move this bill.
Okay, and just for the public listening, what this subbill does is add emergency funds in the accounting amount of a little more than $1.8 million. And this would be to buy protective masks, PPEs for first responders, so fire police EMS, as well as community members, such as grocery store workers, school cafeteria workers, funeral workers. If this is approved tonight and signed by the county executive, it could become effective as soon as tomorrow. The money will be immediately available to make these purchases, which are, according to these different groups, are very much needed right now. So with that said, I move for the adoption of substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 103.
Second, Harder.
Before I ask for all in favor or opposed, I will say that, Councilman, I think that this is a very good idea. I think this is necessary. I do think it better belongs within Bill 104, where the money can come directly from the CARES Act instead of first from the Health Fund, which is why I will be voting no to adopt this substitute bill and why I have adopted a substitute bill for 104 that mirrors this.
And I'd like to reply to that. Like I said, like I said, this money will be immediately available. We don't know for sure where we're going to get the CARES Act money. We heard earlier today, it could be this week. This money will be available to make these emergency purchases tomorrow if it passes tonight and is signed by the county executive.
I understand. I know from the letter that you wrote about this, though, that we've got at least two weeks of PPE already, so I don't think it is urgent that we act on this component tonight. All in favor?
Wait a minute, just a second.
What, did you make a motion, sir, to adopt the bill?
I did, and we're, got a second.
There was a second by Councilman Harder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
No.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Clancy?
No.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
I can't believe we're voting against PPE. That's why I say yes.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 103, there are three ayes and four noes.
The motion fails. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 103 is not adopted. I move to advance Bill Number 103 to the final passage.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Go ahead.
They need to perfect. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I was getting ahead. I move to perfect substitute, or I'm sorry, I move to perfect Bill Number 103.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No, and I hope the people of our community remember this.
Madam Chair, on the motion to perfect Bill Number 103, there are four ayes and three noes.
Bill Number 103 is perfected.
Well, a point of order, please.
Councilwoman Gray.
The additional comments prior to your votes, I think are, I mean, we've been having this like the past few weeks or couple of months, are totally out of line.
I agree, and I want to remind everyone of the standards of decorum that we are expected to adhere to and that we owe each other during this meeting, even during times of disagreement. Thank you. I would like to move to advance, Council, Councilman Tracus, you are not recognized right now. I move to advance Bill Number 103 to the final passage order of business. And in doing so, I want to remind everyone that if we can pass this tonight, we can immediately spend money on testing for our community without delay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Dunaway?
Yes, me.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on the motion to advance Bill Number 103 to the final passage order of business, there are four ayes and three noes.
Bill 103 fails to proceed to the final passage order of business. It will remain on our agenda for another week. I hope the council does the right thing at that time, and I do hope the community remembers this because we are delaying the deployment of crucial testing for our community, especially those in most vulnerable neighborhoods in our community, and that is why they're holding up reopening of our...
What was your, how was your comment? You get to make all the comments you want, and we don't.
You are not recognized.
Why do you get to do that? Well, we don't recognize you.
Privileges as the chairperson of the council. Please proceed, Madam Clerk.
You abuse them.
Bill Number 104, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Move, my subbill 1, adopted. This subbill, as I said earlier, is a reasoned and reasonable compromise between the...
Excuse me, Councilman Tracus, you are out of order right now. Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, madam, it's my bill. I want to move it for adoption. I have a right to explain to the public what the bill does.
Councilman Tracus, I just need to read the bill first?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 104, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. An emergency ordinance establishing a special revenue fund, establishing a special emergency fund, providing for the deposit and manner of appropriation of funds received pursuant to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act, providing further for the expenditure of such funds for purposes relating to the public health emergency created by COVID-19, providing further for the creation of a compliance program, and declaring an
As I said, this bill is a reasoned and reasonable compromise between the Bill 104 as currently written, which cedes all control and power of over $175 million to the county executive at one time. This bill would give the county executive $43.5 million immediately to use quickly and swiftly as he says he needs to, at the same time would retain a council appropriation authority over the remaining $130 million. I believe it represents a reasoned and reasonable compromise, and I'd ask my colleagues to seriously consider it, and I therefore move for adoption of Subbill 1, Bill 104. Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
No.
Councilmember Dunaway?
No.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Clancy?
No.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt substitute Bill One for Bill Number 104, there are three ayes and four nos.
The motion fails. Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104 is not adopted.
Madam Chair, we have another substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Four, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Days, Dunaway, and Walton Gray. An emergency ordinance establishing a special revenue fund, providing for the deposit and appropriation of funds received pursuant to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act, providing further for the expenditure of such funds for purposes relating to the public health emergency created by COVID-19, providing further for the creation of a compliance program and declaring an emergency.
So, as I mentioned earlier, this would authorize the purchase of about 1.8 million of personal protective equipment for first responders and other essential workers directly from the CARES Act. I move for adoption of substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 104. Is there a second?
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
May I be heard, Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Trachis?
Thank you. I also want the public to know that this subbill does what the original Bill 104 intended, which is to cede the entire $175 million in CARES Act money in one fell swoop to the county executive to use and spend as he sees fit without any further council consideration or approval. Thank you.
I would like to speak as well.
Councilwoman Gray?
I disagree. I fully believe that the county executive will not spend the money without consultation with the council or anyone else. Thank you.
May I be heard, Madam Chair?
Councilman Trachis, you've had the opportunity to state your view on this bill. We are going to go ahead and vote at this time.
May I be, may I be heard, Madam Chair?
Councilman Fitch? Go ahead. Please make your comment brief so we can please proceed.
Okay, so basically what this subbill does, so everybody understands, is it forces, trying to force additional votes to support the county executive's plan by taking the PPE from the first responders in Sub Bill One for 103 and moving it over to 104 Sub Bill One. So we could have already approved this, but what they're trying to do is force us to agree to the original Sub Bill 104 by putting the PPE in there. But that's just not necessary. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and vote on this.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Beth Orwick, I believe your motion was for Sub Two. I think you just need to correct your motion to say substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104.
Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 104.
Number, you should be substitute Bill Number One.
Oh, correct, because substitute, okay, got it. Thank you. I move for adoption of substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104. And Councilwoman Gray, would you like to provide your second again?
Yes, second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104, there are four ayes and three nos.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104 is adopted. I move to perfect substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on the motion to perfect, excuse me, substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104, there are four ayes and three nos.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104 is adopted. Now, before I make a motion to advance substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104 to final passage, I would like to share some thoughts. I know that there has been much rhetoric about this bill. However, I think that this proposal asks of us to treat an emergency like an emergency. Passing this bill tonight allows the counties to be able to spend our CARES Act money, which is expected Friday, immediately upon receipt. The longer it takes to pass this, the more days and weeks we add to the process. That's fine for most bills, but it is unconscionable during a pandemic. We aren't giving up oversight, or we're not going to be less vigilant, and the administration will remain accountable to the federal government, to the council, and to county residents. There are some things we can demand, and we will. We want to see where every dollar is spent and see every contract and agreement and every result. This bill provides for that. That is our duty here. Let's put partisanship aside, put gubernatorial and presidential politics aside, and get a unanimous vote to pass this bill. At a minimum, I expect at least four votes to proceed. I want to remind my colleagues that we retain a great deal of authority after approving this bill, and we're not going to be afraid to use it, and we shouldn't be. Some people want to treat the federal money like a windfall. It's not. It's a lifeline. We don't spend this money urgently and wisely, more people will die, and our economic recovery will be further delayed. I will not face my constituents with that on my conscience. I move to advance substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Four, 104, to the final passage order of business. Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
I did want to say something before the vote. Very short, because I gave my statement earlier, but I do want to make sure the public is aware of the portal. It will be available for view in real time, to my knowledge. So if anyone has any questions about how the money is going to be spent or is being spent, that is available, similar to the proxy portal.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. I heard a second. Dunaway? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Madam Chair, on the motion to advance substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104 to the final passage order of business, there are four ayes and three nos.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number 104 has failed to move to the final passage order of business tonight. It will remain on our agenda, and it will be on the final passage order of business next week, and I expect to move it then. Please move on to final passage.
Bill Number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold. Bill Number 320 is held.
Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 385.
Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number 385 is held.
Bill Number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill Number 14, please.
Bill Number 14 is held.
Bill Number 95, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 95.
Second, Days.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 95, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 95 is finally passed.
Bill Number 96, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 96.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 96, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 96 is finally passed.
Bill Number 97, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 97.
Second, Dunaway.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 97, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 97 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions. This evening, Madam Chair, we have one resolution. Resolution Number One, introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Clancy, Trachis, and Harder.
I move for the adoption. Well, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution Number One, whereas the novel coronavirus known as COVID-19 has created a global health crisis, and whereas this pandemic has, in some manner, impacted every resident of St. Louis County, and whereas coordinated, evidence-based actions taken by public health and public safety officials play a crucial role in slowing the rate of infection and ultimately saving lives, and whereas on March 6, St. Louis County activated our Emergency Operations Center, EOC, in anticipation of the potential impact of COVID-19 in St. Louis County, bringing together in one location the Department of Public Health, the Office of Emergency Management, the Office of the County Counselor, the Department of Information Technology, the Department of Human Services, public information officers, local fire EMS, and a coalition of local hospital systems. And whereas the role of the EOC is to centralize communication between key stakeholders and coordinate community education efforts in order to maximize resources and effective decision-making, and whereas since activation, county staff members, the St. Louis County Police Department, and community representatives and volunteers have worked collaboratively and around the clock to save lives and mitigate the impact of this crisis. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section One, the County Council extends heartfelt appreciation and admiration to the extraordinary and talented group of professionals who are working day and night at the county's Emergency Operations Center to respond to the unprecedented public health crisis presented by COVID-19.
Councilwoman Gray, would you like to make your motion?
Yes. I didn't see your, okay. I move for the adoption of, did you read Section Two? About gratitude, admiration, esteem.
Oh, excuse me, it was on, oh.
That's what I was waiting for.
I'm sorry. I'll continue with Section Two. The acting administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to the Director of the Office of Emergency Management as a permanent token of the council's esteem, admiration, and gratitude. I apologize for that.
I would say that is probably the most important part.
Thank you.
We really do appreciate what everyone is doing at the center. But not to prolong the meeting, I move for the adoption of Order Number, I'm sorry, Resolution Number One.
Second, Days.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number One, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries. Resolution Number One is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number one.
The appointment will be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
The appointments and reappointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
The appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
The appointments be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number five.
The appointment will be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business, we have two prepared orders this evening.
I move for the adoption of Order Number One.
Let me, excuse me, Councilwoman Gray, that's okay. I just want to tell you what it's about. Prepared Order Number One, in the matter of the request of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of various county departments and offices.
I move for the adoption of Order Number One.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order Number One is adopted.
And Prepared Order Number Two, in the matter of donations of various items in support of the Kathy J. Weinman Shelter.
I move for the adoption of Order Number Two.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order Number Two is adopted. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second, Dunaway.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.